Moved by Summer, seconded by Mahoney to approve the agenda with additions. Any other discussions? Hearing none, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Craig. Now, we will go on to approving the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we will approve the minutes, accept the financial reports, approve the claims, those without conflicts of interest, consider any contracts, accept donations, accept resignations, hire summer staff, approve the ASB/SD Protective Trust for SDSD Benefit Fund Participation Agreement, approve the ASB/SD Protective Trust SDSD Benefit Fund Adoption and Renewal, and to approve the ASB/SD Protective Trust SDSD Workers Compensation Fund Adoption and Renewal. We also approve the ASB/SD Protective Trust SDSD Workers Compensation Participation Agreement and approve the 2021 SPED Comprehensive Plan, the issuance of classified contracts, and consider BSC contract. Now, the changes to the agenda that we'll also approve is the utility trailer. And in our email we received earlier, it was discussed that the band boosters purchased a utility trailer for the band a number of years ago. They used it to transport the percussion equipment on and off the field during marching competitions. They donated that utility trailer to the school a while back, like they do with all of their equipment. They asked if we could declare its surplus, have it appraised, and then put it up for sale with the proceeds going back into the band department. So, we will need to include that on the agenda. And again, if you don't agree with any of these items, we can remove them. We also have the election results. South Dakota codified law states that information regarding school elections be provided in the school board minutes. For the most recent annual school election conducted in each school district, each school board shall provide, in the school board minutes, the following information: the number of registered voters on the school district on the date voter registration closes, the number of registered voter of the school district who lived in the election, the percentage of registered voters of the school district who voted in the election, and if the election was held in conjunction with a regular municipal election. If the annual election was not conducted because there was neither a contested vacancy on the school board nor any questions submitted to the voters, the school board shall provide the information in the school board minutes. Thus, for the minutes, the Parkston School District had two candidates, John Proll and Matt Leishner, run for two positions. As a result, the Parkston School District will not be holding an election this year. So, with those two additions to the consent agenda, we'll need a motion to accept the agenda as read. Or if anyone wants any of those items removed, we can remove them as well. All right, hearing no comments on removing, I will open it up for a motion to approve the agenda. By Jill. Do we have a second? John, you're muted, but I think you just seconded. Okay, John Proll, seconded.
Moved by Niva and seconded by Proll to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussions? Hearing none, no one in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried.
For the purpose of any public watching or listening to our meeting today, the contracts that we considered under the consent agenda was for Peyton Smith for business with Assistant Football for $38,947. We also had a contract for April Teal for English and Spanish for $41,550. We did accept two donations for the board, Pat Sudbeck's school supplies and/or school lunches for $150. And anonymous, we received a pottery wheel. We did also accept resignations for Lindsay Gerhart for vocal music and Kevin Kurtz for instrumental music. Our higher summer staff was for the home summer school. They had their daily rate of pay prorated for Michael Freeman, Jen Bartout, Chad Jadozy, and Melissa Schnabel. We extended school year for $15 an hour was Lynette Gerlock and Cassidy Grizzard. All right. We now move on to our correspondence and public commentary. And I have no one present. Is there anyone on the line that has any comment for the school board?
Okay, we haven't received any calls at school either.
Thank you, Mr. Yost. We'll now move on to good news items. And we'll start with Mr. Yost and Ms...
Oh, yeah, at this time, you know, I think it's kind of lumped into our staff reports with Mr. Norton and I.
Okay.
Outstanding, real good news, other than, I know it's just the reports, staff reports.
Great. All right. So, information discussion items, well, let's see, where are we at? I'm sorry, I'm under, all right. So, now we will move on to information and discussion items, staff reports.
Yeah, I can start on the elementary end. Again, this is my newest elementary principal. And I just kind of share a little bit, we finished up school and we had our drop-off and pickup at school here on last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. A lot of good comments from the public, so I do commend all of our constituents and families and everybody who worked so hard to finish this year up the way we did. So, I was surprised, a lot of tears in that gym from the parents just bringing, it's, you know, you can really see the importance of education on each of the bases. So, thank you to everybody involved with that. Teachers will be coming in here this week and will be finalizing, finalizing their summatives, you know, working through the evaluations, and then also sitting down with them and looking through standards and planning for next year just to make sure that we can identify the gaps that are going to be left and then be proactive as far as how we're going to, how we're going to close those gaps starting next year. So, that's on the elementary side. On the athletic side, I guess I just have one item just for a little discussion here and just want a little input, but a lot of places around the state are starting to open up their green spaces, so I just want to put it out there and just what our thoughts are, if we can open up just the track and field areas and then also those, the practice football fields to the north of the school. Again, I think we'd be, we'd have the local police department patrol those areas just to make sure there's not any congregation going on or break up, you know, large groups, but I guess I was just putting it out there for any comments on that.
Matt, if we do open them up, will we have signage placed out there for the social distancing and non-gathering?
I think that's a great idea, and we have those signs made, so it wouldn't be any issue to, you know, right now it says closed, so we would just replace those with the COVID-19 or social distancing CBC guidelines.
Yeah, no, I personally think it's a great idea. I know a lot of people could utilize, especially the track and the kids, the open fields. So, my vote would be to go ahead and open them with the appropriate signage available. That's just my opinion. We'll see if any other board members want to weigh in.
Yeah, no, I'd agree. If it's, if the state's opening up and saying it's okay to do that, appropriate signage, I can't see why not.
All right.
I'll move forward with that then, and otherwise, that's all I have for reports, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Norton unless there are some questions here.
Matt, before you go on, will you have to do some rearranging for the classrooms for next year, class sizes?
No, we're set to go. We hired that sixth grade position, so we're full, so we moved into that classroom already. We will kind of shift around where our guidance counselor will do her classes at, but otherwise, yeah, preschool through sixth grade, we're running a whole boat now, so.
And do you know, have the students been assigned the elementary teachers for next year already?
That's a secret. We can't, no. We are working on that.
I know it's a big issue, for sure.
Yeah, no, we have, we have a pretty, a very intricate kind of system with that, with rubrics that the teachers work on. So, when I have my exit meetings with all the teachers, we sit down and we'll look at those lists, so the teachers will have them before they leave for the year. And then we send those out that first week in August. We'll send the letters out to all the students.
So, the first week in August is the earliest, they'll know who their teacher is?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
On the high school end, Mr. Yost, this, he probably needs to be involved in this one a little bit. This probably is much good news for this time of year as we have, was Ward's night. Went over extremely well. We had a lot of positive comments on it with the conditions we were dealing with. I think it went probably about as smoothly as we could hope. So, that was a good positive for us. I've got a couple other things to throw at you. Our turn-in went really well. I would guess we were over 90%, we were right at 90% of the people to show up, get stuff turned in, so we're still getting the remainders of that done for us. Prom, we still have a couple dates coming up. We're just going to watch the CDC, we're going to watch everything else and make decisions on those as we go through. We have one date in June, one date in July. And then we also have graduation, which we're really building up the plans. Just today, I was watching the weather to kind of decide what day we were going to try and go on. It changed three different times. Then at 6:00, I told Mr. Yost, it says now we've got thunderstorms on Saturday, and then at 6:20, it changed again to rain, so, and just mixed in some. So, I, we're going to try and make a hard decision tomorrow, whether it's going to be Saturday or Sunday. It looks like Friday's out, and we'll kind of go from there. The process is going to be, they're going to line, they're going to start in the parking lot. We're going to have different spots for each of the parents and students to come to within the building. So, we'll have one at the armory doors, one at the main armory doors as they come into the building, then one at the end of the sidewalk. And as we call them in, they'll walk across the stage. Everybody can upgrade one spot, and the next group of people will actually come up to the parking lot, or to the sidewalk end. Once they go across the stage, they can take a picture or two. We're going to allow basically parents and siblings to come in to take pictures or watch them walk across the stage, and that's what we're going to limit it to at that point. Once they're done walking across the stage, they'll head out to big armory doors and head over to the park. We're going to have tables set up all the way around the park that each of the students and their parents will be able to stand by, and we'll have the people from the community kind of go through and say their wish, best wishes to the students as they kind of go through. The plan, I've got kind of all written out. That's going to go out as soon as I have a date. So, that should go out tomorrow to all the parents. We're trying to keep them up as updated as possible and answer questions as fast as we can so that they're aware of what's going on. And then we've got a couple other dates for an actual commencement that hopefully can happen a little bit later on in the summer. And we'll try and get those dates solidified at least two weeks in advance, so everyone can make appropriate plans. So, that's kind of the graduation side of it. And the final thing, I sent you all an email with a policy change I would like to do. Talking to Mr. McIntosh, we felt that I'd kind of introduce it. I've talked to Mr. Yost, and we'd introduce it tonight just to let you know what it is, have, give you a chance to look through it, and then maybe do a first reading and solidify it for the June meeting and a second reading by July. The reason to modify, if you look at the original policy, it's not very consistent, and it tends to be a little bit hard to follow. Basically, the way it works is your first two weeks are free to go in a nine-week period because there just aren't enough grades. Then if you are failing after that, you get put on probation until midterms. If you are failing at midterms, then you become ineligible. But once you pass, then all of a sudden, you're eligible for the rest of the school for that nine weeks, no matter what happens with your grade. You just get put back on probation until we have another time. Basically, what I would like to switch it to is your first two weeks would be the same as normal. We would just kind of let it go until we get enough grades in there. And then on that third week is a probation week for everybody. So, if you're failing any class, then you're on probation during that week. The following week after that, when I take grades on the Monday, if you're failing, you're ineligible. It doesn't matter which class. If you have an F in any class, you become ineligible. If you were good for seven weeks and you're failing in the eighth week, you're ineligible for that time till the end of the nine weeks. That's kind of a short summary of how that changes. It'd make it a lot more consistent and a lot simpler for everybody to understand and to incorporate. And then, Mr. Yost and I have been talking also about the other policy for eligibility, and that deals with drinking and/or smoking or any of those kind of things, so it's more the athletic co-curricular thing. We're also going to address that a little bit to try and make that very, a lot more consistent also. Right now, our co-curriculars have a completely different policy than our extracurriculars, and we would like to kind of get them all incorporated into the same policy so we don't have four different rules going all at the same time. And we will be getting you that information as we go ahead. That one's a little bit more intricate, so I wanted to make sure we had things written up and figured out before I threw it at you. That's pretty much all of my information, so if you have any questions.
Eric, you said that that policy was emailed out?
Yeah, didn't you get one?
I don't recall, but I get an awful lot of email. When did it go out?
Would have been about 2:30, 3 o'clock, I think.
Oh, today?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, if not, I'll double-check. If I didn't have your name on there, I'll make sure I get it sent to you.
I'm sure it's out there. I also had a question on the graduation.
Yes.
So, I understand Saturday's events. And I understand after they receive their diploma, there's going to be a drive-through the park.
Right.
What's the other portion of graduation that you're talking about? Are you guys planning another drive-through or?
No, it would be a full commencement type of idea where we would have it in the armory. We would have the speakers come up and just have a regular commencement ceremony. Students really, really, really want that idea. The question comes, what makes a full commencement? Does that mean that anybody that wants to come can come? Or is that just so many, you know, 500 people max or whatever? And that's what the question we'd have to answer is. They'll get their diplomas this first time through, so the second time would be more ceremony. But just to give them that opportunity to celebrate their graduation.
Okay.
And as normal a situation as possible.
So, there will be no valedictorian speeches or anything on Saturday?
No, no, it's just going to be walk across the stage and go stand in the park.
Okay. And then, I guess I didn't realize prom was still on the agenda, you know?
Yeah, it's been thrown around a lot, one way or another. A lot of the people are for it, some are against. If we do have it at this point, I can't see inviting other communities. It would just be a local dance that we basically have. We decorate it out some and kind of go from there. Again, we don't want to take things away that we don't have to. I'm kind of tore, I'll be honest with you on it, but at the same time, a lot of people are hoping that we can get something in. And I've told them, we've just got to be as honest as possible. If it's not available, then it's just going to have to be canceled.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, you know, anyone listening, you know, to be aware of what's being thrown around still in the community. Does any other board members have any questions for either of the principals? All right, if not, Shane, Mr. McIntosh?
Hey, one quick thing, sorry, Ms. McIntosh, just thought of this. With, what we're doing now is what those students have all kind of gone through, so you're kind of getting an experience of what they went through. The joys and the hindrances that they kind of suffered through, so they've done a great job. Staff has one little hint for you. If you hit the spacebar, that'll mute and unmute you, and it can help you out, so when we start doing motions and so on, you don't have to try and find everything.
Good to know.
This is Jill. I just have one question. What positions do we have open yet?
I was going to say, I heard that.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, so I'll start with that. So, you know, the things I've been doing over the last month, one of them that we've been working on is staffing. And you approved two of the contracts earlier today.
Really hard to hear. I guess for me, anyway. Maybe it's just me. I could hear everybody else fine, but not you.
How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, we spent this last month working on staffing. We had the two teachers that you guys approved the contracts for earlier. That was for the English and the Spanish, and then the business teacher. And since we've had the two resignations from the music teachers, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, we have been advertising for those.
McIntosh, we're not able to hear you. On our end, it's really mumbled, but yeah, actually, sorry.
How's that?
Maybe with your speaker.
How's it now? Better? All right, we're trying to get. Third time's a charm.
Take three.
So, we've been working on staffing, and as you guys saw in the agenda, you've got two resignations before, so we're going to talk about that a little bit later. So, to answer Jill's question, the positions we have right now are instrumental music and vocal music, and that's for 7312. Other than that, we're staffed, and I feel pretty fortunate about that. There hasn't been a lot of applications coming through. You know, I think, I think us getting out early was helpful, and hopefully, we'll see some good results from the music search, but that's where we are right now. With that, of course, we need to know so we can put together a budget. Tonight, you're going to see a preliminary budget, and it is very preliminary. But that being said, the governor announced some time ago that she planned to have a special session in June to look at the tax revenues to determine what kind of state aid adjustments she may need to make. Well, fortunately, I think things went just a little bit better than maybe they were expecting in Pierre. Revenues were certainly down, but probably not as far as they thought they would be. So, now she's thinking that there, the latest thing I've heard is that there probably won't be a June special session, but maybe in September. And that puts us in a real bind because, you know, we're going to start up the new fiscal year on July 1. Staff will have their salary, new salaries in their paychecks on August. So, I'm not sure how we should proceed with negotiations and budgeting in light of the news from Pierre. That being said, we're not the only ones in this position, so we will go out and talk with others to see how they're handling it, and we'll talk with Mr. Freeman, see what other schools he's representing or doing, and then we'll get that information to you. But, so budgets, negotiations, staffing, and then all the federal legislation. It's never-ending trying to read what all of that stuff means and what we can and cannot do with it. So, I've been doing a lot of that as well, and I'll be talking about... And I'll be talking about the CARES Act here a little later in the agenda as well. So those are the things I've been working on over the course of the past month. Does anyone have questions?
Are there any coaching positions still open?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there are. We have-- Matt, maybe you can help me with that, please?
Yep, I sure can. Well, we have everything in the works, to be honest, you know, with the staff that we have. So still, still working on a couple of those positions right now. But I feel very confident that we do have, we will have those positions filled with the staff that we hired and will be having now. One thing, Mr. McIntosh, that DE position, though, that we're holding off, what if you want to speak to that?
Sure. Sorry. Volleyball, I think that's still open, isn't it, Matt?
I have the one interest.
Okay.
That, though, that I've spoken with, so I'm pretty good about it.
Okay, good. So the physical education position is the position that's held by Mr. Digman. And as you know, he's indicated that there's a strong likelihood that he will be activated to active duty with the South Dakota National Guard. So we haven't really pursued that position real hard yet because Mr. Digman does not have his orders. But once those come, we will, we will look to piece together that as well and maybe even find some coaching there if all works out. But that'd be a one-year position until he would return.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Mr. McIntosh? All right, if there are no questions, we'll move on to the Flex Learning Report. And that will be the principals.
And I'll just kind of piggyback off of our report, you know. And again, I think that this time, now that we've finished up, we really just, you know, shifting gears, just looking in the future now, just to determine the gaps, really get together with and collaborate with staff members so we can, we can talk about what we would have, you know, the standards we would have met, and then talk about that with the grade level above, so that they can start preparing at the beginning of the year, just close those gaps. Overall, again, I can't be more proud of my staff and our community. I think we came out of this, you know, just about as positive and in good spirits as we can. So again, now it's just, again, shifting gears, so.
Yeah, and on my end, I've got students still coming in, actually, this week. Didn't take to this online learning very well, so keeping them actively going. We got them coming in during the week here and actually sitting at school and doing some of that homework to try and make up and get caught back up so we don't end up losing anything that we don't need to. So we're still trying to make sure that students don't get lost in the process. And all in all, it went very well. There were a few hiccups with anything, but I have to be extremely proud of the staff and everyone else, just like Mr. Yost had stated.
And I want to just add to that, that we need to send a shout-out to all the parents as well. I know the staff did a phenomenal job, and we said this last month, that it was not a traditional school day by any means. They were working with students and families from morning till evening. And so we can't say enough about our staff. But I also want to really thank the family members for doing everything they could and stepping up and helping us with this e-learning. So it definitely was a community project.
I agree with you 100% Barb. It was amazing what some of those parents had to go through to try and get things done across the board and, you know, for them to continue to push just as we were. So I agree with you. It was a complete community effort.
Are there any other inputs on the Flex Learning Report? Mr. McIntosh, did you have anything, sir?
No, I'd just like to echo what you guys have already said about the parents and the cooperation they provided. And I know it was a hardship on a lot of families. You know, we learned a lot from the process as well. And one of the things I'll be asking the principals to do over the next two weeks with their teachers is to identify those areas that we probably need to change our approach in teaching and sit down as a team or as a group, or it's going to have to be a small group, I guess, and just talk out some of those things. It's not ideal, obviously, but again, I'm proud of my staff and the students and the parents, and just want to thank everyone for their cooperation.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members before we proceed? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the food service report. Craig, if you speak on this, I'd also like you to address the, how long the summer program will go on. And I kind of skipped over talking about who was going to be employed, taking care of that, if you wouldn't mind covering that.
First, we'll get started with our balance issue. As you see in our financial report this month, the balance has gone down. We do have close to $20,000 of equipment ordered this month that will be coming out of there, so that'll be a good chunk and get us down to that around $100,000 range for a balance in there, which is closer. We do need to get close to about $80,000. We do have a call-in to the state with asking for forgiveness, forgiveness to maybe give us another year to get there due to the pandemic and us not being able to serve some of those free meals that we were doing the last two months of the year. But other options we have to get that down is to take some of my salary out of the school lunch program. Since I am the food service director, I have a role there where I process the claims and do the free and reduced meal applications and things like that, so we can take a portion of my time and the secretary's times because they receipt the deposits each day and things like that, and custodials as well. So we have some other deals to do, adjustments to do for the end of the year that'll get us pretty close, I think, or at least maybe appease the state on that. For the summer food service program now, as you know, we've been taking meals door-to-door in town. The out-of-town students have the option to pick up Endemic or the Parkston Food Center, Trip and Delmont. We have stops in all those places as well. And we're going to continue to do that through June 30. And the reason why we can do that is because of the summer seamless option, which is we don't normally qualify for because we do not have a high enough free and reduced rate. But we, due to the federal, or the pandemic, the federal government has waived those limitations and allowing everyone to do it for the summer through June 30. So there's a deal out on the website for parents to sign up. They can go on there and select the days of the week that they want to get free meals for their kids that are of school age. And we would go around and deliver them in town, or they'd be able to pick them up at one of those four locations that we have been delivering for the last couple of months. For the workers for that, we have hired some, the kitchen staff are taking turns, some in there, and we're just hiring them at their regularly hourly rate, along with some paraprofessionals that will be doing some of the delivery as well as working in there and preparing, not necessarily preparing the meals, but packing the meals and getting them ready for the minivan to be driven around town. Okay, I think, any questions on any of the food service?
I got one. Craig, how many meals are we averaging a day right now?
Anywhere from 160. The highest we've ever been is 197. But I do know this summer, I've already gotten a few emails and texts after delivering today. They kind of thought the summer thing started today, and technically, we just went by what people had signed up. We weren't starting the summer thing until the 15th. We were just delivering to everybody who had already registered for a meal normally. I do have some cancellations. I could see that number going down a little bit in the summer just because people are busier and they're not always going to be home. You know, some kids, they're going to be working at the farm, they won't be home during lunch. That was one of the excuses to, or not excuses, but reasons for not getting them any longer. So I could see, I bet you it would be closer, right around 150, maybe a little less a day.
Are there any other questions for Craig? Thank you, Mr. Bruning. We'll now move on to the student-worker discussion. We need to discuss if we would like to hire student summer workers. So I'll let Mr. McIntosh take this.
Thank you. As you know, we typically will hire three to four summer workers, students, and have them assist in the classrooms. And I know our custodial staff would really like that. Again, my only concern would be the maintaining of social distancing with that. That being said, I think if they plan accordingly, that too shouldn't be an issue. There are times when they will need two people to carry, say, a desk or something out of a classroom. But other than that, I don't know that they should have a problem with social distancing. In any case, we held off. Typically, we would have asked this question a month or two ago, but considering the pandemic, we did not. We didn't know where we were going to end up. So tonight, I guess I'm looking for the authorization to go ahead and hire two to three students, depending upon what Mr. Berg wishes, and then go ahead and bring them aboard and have them start working before the next school board meeting. So technically, they would be working before you approve them. But I would certainly let you know who those students are. And depending upon who applies, we will, you know, pick out the people who interview accordingly. Mr. Berg will obviously be one of them, and either Craig or I would probably be the other person included in the interview.
Thoughts?
So in addition to the two summer hire workers that are students, who else will be working in the summer from the custodial staff?
All three custodians will be working. And then we do have the mower, if you will. That's a pretty busy job right now as well. So it would be the three custodians working in the building and then the students. And that's typically what we have had.
I have one question. Just curious, does it have to be a student? What if you had a facility member or staff member who wanted those hours? Would you be open to that, being someone who already works at the school instead of it being a student?
I guess we've never done it that way. I can tell you that we did advertise for the staff, for the food service for the summer, and there wasn't huge interest in that. As a matter of fact, I think we only had two. The other difference is the students we hire at a lot lower rate than, say, one of our hourly employees would be hired at. But if that's something the board wants us to do, you know, we certainly can do it.
I just thought I'd throw it out there, you know, even if they were hired at a lower rate of what you would normally hire the student, and they would know that, at least if they were missing hours or wanted to make up the difference, they could. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. It was just a thought.
Jill, I had to go searching for the food service positions that were offered, so.
Okay. That's fine. I just, maybe someone would rather mow lawn instead of do food. I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there as an option. I don't know if it's possible.
Do you have some potential candidates?
I think, I think we have some students who are interested. I know I had one young man touch base with me. So what we would do is we would use Mr. Norden's address book and send out emails to all the students, probably typically 16-year-olds, 16 and older. So I don't know, is that sophomore, freshman? I'm not sure. But we would look at that and then forward emails to them, seeing if anybody would like to be considered for a job. And then they could email us an application and then go about the process that way, Tom.
Shane, can you? Kind of, and maybe Craig, this might be you, but kind of touch on, that's five full-time employees for the summer months for custodial. What is it that, what big-ticket items are they doing? I know we just had the flood, so we had a lot of the carpet replaced and shampooing, that kind of stuff. But what, what are we employing, five full-time employees in custodial for the summer with?
Laundry list of things that need to be done. For example, they shampoo every carpet in the building. And in order to do that, you have to remove all of the classroom materials from those classrooms to shampoo the carpets. Then they get them dried out and then replace all of those materials. And there's a lot of rooms, a lot of desks, a lot of things that need to be moved. And typically, those are the things that the students are doing. Other things would include, we need to take the covers off all of the HVAC units on the outside and wash those out. You know, the list goes on. You know, the things that people see, polishing floors, you know, yeah, we wouldn't need five people to do polishing the hallway floors. The gym floor usually takes about four or five people to do those jobs.
I'm only asking, you know, how to have a school for, I don't know, what, a month or so? Or I assume some of these, without them having to empty garbages and do all of that, some of these jobs might have already been tackled.
Well, I think some of them have been. I mean, obviously, we had staff in, and they were cleaning and wiping things down and that type of stuff. So yes, that was done. You know, in terms of how many employees that would, how many work hours that's going to save, I couldn't tell you. But obviously, some, yes.
Because normally, we have three or four students during the summer, and then the three custodians, and then the summer driver slash mower position in the past. And we are one of the few schools that still do our own gym floors. Some place, most places hire that done by another company or another third person to come in and do that for them. There's not very many of them that do that anymore. To, I mean, that takes a little bit of time. It's a week-long process there for that, for all of them at once.
All right, so I guess with saying that, we need to take a vote, or we need a motion to hire the two summer hires.
Tom, move.
That was Tom Summer. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That was Jim Mahoney.
And that was, I'm just.
To hire the two summer hires at minimum wage.
Move by Summer and Simon Mahoney to hire two student custodians for the summer. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Motion is carried. All right, next on our agenda is the presentation of the preliminary budget. Mr. Bruning will provide the board with a copy of the preliminary budget. And that is in our package. So if you'd like to just follow along while he presents.
As Mr. McIntosh said earlier, this is very, very, very preliminary because we don't have a lot to go by right now, so everything's pretty much status quo from the previous year at this time, with a few little minor changes and corrections from what was possibly adjusted or needed to be adjusted from last year. But, you know, as you can look there, a little bit higher in the general fund right now, not much. But like I said, this is as rough as it's been in my, whatever, 12, 13 years of doing this, just because of, due to the pandemic and the situation going on right now. So I would. So I wouldn't take a lot of stock in this right now. Mainly because the main reason why you have it tonight is by codified law, we have to start and show you a preliminary budget.
Craig, Craig, Ken, Ken, obviously. We all have a copy of this and we can look through it, but I guess because it is so preliminary, are there any red flags? Are any real items on here that we should focus on or any attention needed by the board at this point?
Not right now. Like I said, the.
Depending on positions in the PE and how that goes, that could affect it very dramatically in the future. We didn't add any positions right now. The reason why it's probably a little higher at the time of the budget or the issue, the preschool fully taken out is probably the reason why it's a little higher than what it was in the past, you know, the year. That was an adjustment, if I remember right. But, you know, we might have to take a look at special education and meeting maintenance of effort. But I think we, I think we'll be fine there too, depending on the number of aides that we'll need next school year. But none of that stuff has been added.
Mary, turn.
Yes, Mr. Norden.
I'm getting there. Yes, yes, yes.
We were just talking about the budget and hiring staffing.
I've been sitting here the whole time, yeah.
Right, the staffing positions. How is the colony? How are they doing? Are you foreseeing a program next year with them continuing on with their?
Our numbers are going to be way down out there. The way it looks right now, we might get one or two moving up. But even at that, we're, we started the year at nine or ten, I think, and we were down to four and maybe even three at the end of the year. So as far as that goes, we'll only have one person out there, probably.
Right.
Is the way we're going to try and do that.
Okay.
So we'll have to make that adjustment again, once we get a little bit better on the numbers out there.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the preliminary budget that is provided in your board package or have any questions for Craig?
I got one. Are we caught up on vehicles? Is there anything in here?
Like I said, those haven't been adjusted at all. But I, if we need anything, maybe one to replay. We got one old Dodge Caravan left. That's a 2005, I believe, that has quite a few miles on it. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Tom. Nothing has been adjusted for them in the budget. If anything, we need one for, to replace the 2005 Dodge Caravan, and that's all I would foresee. And that's, you know, we use that to kind of run back and forth to the colony every day because it does have a lot of miles. And they get beat up on the gravel roads, and as long as it's running fine, you know, I guess the only way we'd probably replace that is if it passed away on us.
Expenditures, one of the things I notified the board of was, depending upon what happens in peer, if there is a cut, and if it's a significant cut, you know, we're going to have to look for dollars, and we'd have to look at the capital outlay flex to come up with those. So at this point, we're not, we're not planning a whole lot in capital outlay for that being one of the main reasons.
All right, thank you.
One other thing, Tom, real quick, just so you know the.
I don't know what we spent on textbooks last year, but we were looking at that today too. And these next couple of years on that are very minimal in the curriculum review. So it's not like it's a big textbook year that's in high demand, like the math and the English or sciences, where they're very expensive. Actually, the next two years are going to be very minimal in that area, so that'll help if we have to go that route too.
Next on our agenda is the preschool refund discussion. And with the pandemic, we received questions if there will be any type of refund for preschool. Instruction was provided. So I will let Mr. Bruning discuss this.
I was the one that fielded most of the questions on this. And there was only a few. It wasn't a whole lot. And we do have some people that have paid for the whole year. We have some holding off. I haven't sent bills out for the end of the year yet, just because of this, whether or not we were going to entertain this idea. If we were, how the deal works now is they make nine payments of $120. And I know there's actually ten months, if you count August through May. But what they do is we never charge them until September. So their first billing came in September, and we make nine payments, September, October, through May. Now, they're going to see May as a very light year this year, but what they forgot to see was they never paid for August at the beginning. So technically, you know, May and August were combined, yeah, May and August were combined to make one of those nine payments. If that makes sense to everybody. So, you know, we ended March 13th through May 7th. We still offered instruction. We still paid the teacher out of the general fund. But do we want to entertain something where we maybe give them a one-month refund? Or non-payment where they wouldn't have to pay for the last month for those that have paid? Now, the question you're going to ask is probably, well, how much will that cost us? It's, if everybody, if you gave them one month, it would be $3,500 that we would lose in revenue.
And is that revenue used to help pay for any costs for instruction?
Yes, it's used to help pay the teacher. And it does not cover the full cost of the teacher. You can tell you it was thirty-four, seven, eighty, something, or seventy-eight or something like that was the total. You take that times nine, that doesn't come up to half of what the teacher cost. So, but the question was asked if there would, if you guys would be willing to refund any of it, a portion. Maybe it's not a full month. You know, we did two months of roughly, right, Mr. Yost, about two months of instruction, March 13th through May 7th?
That's why I came up with one. Because of that August issue.
I didn't hear what Barb's question was. What did you ask?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I muted myself. My question was, was, is that money that the parents pay used to pay the instructors? And the answer is yes. So while the kids may not have had any immediate instruction because of the pandemic, we still had the teacher on staff. And so.
And a couple of the arguments that the.
That people did have, which they're legit. You know, they didn't get the one-on, not one-on-one, but the interaction, the being able to function in the classroom. You know, they're, they were at home still, so they didn't get that part of the reason why they come to preschool is to try to adapt. They didn't get that opportunity. They still had to pay for daycare because of the pandemic. And, you know, the reason why, so now they're paying for daycare twice was some of their reasons and rationales why.
But during this time, the teacher was giving them options of learning opportunities, correct?
Yeah.
She's working just as hard as, I mean, she did just as much as the other teachers, I assume, right, Mr. Yost?
Yep, that's correct. She followed the same plan as the rest of our staff, so.
What was the participation? Fifty percent, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent?
I, you know, I don't have a measurement, you know, on that. Preschool didn't return things, you know, it was all an online, an app that we used. They all, I mean, everyone, but probably two families picked up the packets every week though.
Great.
So I guess that would be some sort of a measurement there, Tom.
All right, well, I think we need to make, we need to discuss whether or not we want to give a partial refund or not a refund at all. Personally, I do not think we should give any refund in this situation because the instruction was still provided. I did hear Mr. Bruning talk about, you know, the daycare. Hopefully, they're not looking at the preschool program as a daycare option. But as many of us know, that does happen. So I guess we just, we need to, I need to poll all of our board members and see how you guys feel about it. Jill, can I start with you? You're on the bottom of my screen.
I would agree that I would say no refund at all. I feel like if the teacher was working and giving them opportunities to learn, it's really, all the kids had the same opportunity. So I guess I would say no refund at all.
All right, thank you, Jill. Tom?
I guess with Matt's state, last statement, that all the families picked them up, but two, I think, same deal. I don't feel we should have a refund. There was fifty percent of them didn't pick it up. That'd be a different story.
I agree. Thank you, Tom. Jim?
Yeah, I kind of agree. Yeah, the opportunity is provided there, you know, and if they can take it or leave it. Yeah, it's a bad situation, but yeah, I kind of agree.
Thanks, Jim and John. John, you're muted. Hit your spacebar.
How's that?
That's great.
Yeah, I agree with everybody here. It was there. So it's just an unfortunate situation, so.
Thank you. And I agree with all of those comments, that it is unfortunate. And while we do sympathize with the parents and we understand that it's not exactly what you bargained for, we all, in this pandemic, are facing some of those challenges. So as a board, we vote no to give a refund on the preschool. All right, next on the agenda is the CARES Act planning. I will hand this over to Mr. McIntosh.
My spacebar trick didn't work, Eric. A little disappointed with you. The CARES Act planning. So this is one of the, there are a number of plans, education plans and stimulus that came out with the various stimulus plans from the federal government. Two of them. One is the one I want to talk about today. And then there's another one coming that might provide some additional dollars as well. But in any case, I call it CARES Act planning. There's probably other names for it, more technical names, but it's federal stimulus dollars. And I had indicated a couple of times that I spoke about $184,000. And I misspoke. That number's $146,000, so I'm not quite sure where I came up with $184. But it is $146, which is still a lot of money. And with those dollars, there were some expectations from the federal government and strings attached. One of them was that you try to continue to employ and pay your staff as you would have normally to be eligible for those dollars. And also, I want to add in there, there was one word that was just as important, and it said contractors. And the reason that's important is because we contract our busing. So while we paid for our busing, we're also now eligible to get reimbursed for that. So we're actually, we could actually come out a little bit better than we would have anyway. So we're looking at how we're going to best utilize these dollars. And it gets fairly complicated in a few areas, and it's because of different rules that the federal government has in place. One of them is called maintenance of effort. And what that is, is they do not want using federal dollars to supplant local dollars. They want it to supplement local dollars. So there are strings attached in special education because the maintenance of effort has not been waived. Now, for any kind of title or ESEA programs, the maintenance of effort has been waived. So as you can tell, there's just a lot of balls moving, and we've just got to figure out what we can and cannot reimburse and what we can pay for. Bottom line is going to be this, though. Over the next year and a half, until September of '22, we've got $146,000 that we can spend, and we can spend wisely. Some of it, I think we plan to reimburse some of the expenses we have incurred during this pandemic time. And then some of the other dollars, we hope, I think, to use to provide supplemental instruction for students. So if there are any of those students who did get behind or fell behind their peers during this time, we might be able to provide, you know, that supplement for them to get caught up. That's our goal. Now, of course, we got to find people who are willing to teach too, if we're talking summer schools. We're talking after-school programs, and then we're talking about maybe early childhood programs as well. So we're planning on those things right now. And as soon as the federal government can give us, and the state government can give us a few more details, I think we can put the plan together. It does have to be submitted to the state of South Dakota and approved, but I don't foresee that being a problem. So we've got those dollars. I think we have a possibility of catching a few more dollars, not nearly in that size, but, you know, talking $20,000 to $30,000 in a couple of other areas too. So once we know more detail, we'll sure keep you in the loop.
Yeah, one question, and I think you already answered it, but can you, you can reimburse a bill that's already been paid?
We can. And, you know, we're specifically looking at busing right now. We were looking at reimbursing ourselves for the paraprofessionals that were being paid. But that's where we run into the problem with maintenance of effort. So we have to be careful there of where we try to reimburse those dollars. Because if you don't spend enough local and state dollars as you had the previous year, that's when you get into trouble. And what they do then is then they withhold federal dollars the following year. So we want to do it right and maximize our, the dollars we do have.
Shane, that was really in line with, my question was, when will we know what we're spending it on? And I know you touched that. We need a little bit more guidance. I'm laying this out somehow so that we can see where those funds are going to. And we can't use, I just want to make sure that we can't utilize that money for the classified staff with the budget the way it is, looking from the state.
Right. Like I said, we could use it. But then we would run into the maintenance of effort problem. And then what would happen is every year, we get an annual allocation from the federal government, and this is called IDEA money. And I think our allocation's, what, $116,000 annually, roughly? So if we don't meet that maintenance of effort, Barb, they withhold that much of that federal money the following year by the difference of what we missed it by. So we need to spend our local money in order to collect the $146,000, if that makes sense. And obviously, it didn't cost $146,000 to employ those people for forty days or whatever it was. So, you know, we certainly come out ahead on the deal.
Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Board members, do we have any other questions for Shane about the CARES Act?
I'll try to keep you as informed as I can as we go through the process.
But like I said, we want to maximize those dollars. If we can help our general fund out in doing so, I think that will be our other goal. We'll target in on the general fund rather than any other place. And, you know, busing is one of those. You know, we're looking at probably close to $50,000 of reimbursing the district for busing. So that's a good deal.
And the application will be out in the next two.
In the next two weeks, so then we'll know more. We should know more by the June board meeting for sure.
Great, thank you. Moving on then, our next item is to approve the claims. Those with conflicts of interest. Uh, moving on then, uh, our next item is to approve the claims, those with conflicts of interest.
Yes, sir.
With, um, the conflicts of interest, one, they're not, sorry, I apologize, they were not in your packet, I don't believe. Mr. McIntosh didn't get them in time. Um, one is the City of Parkston for one twenty-eight forty-six for sewer and water. And the other one was BJ School Bus for twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars, just those two. So I need a motion to approve those bills.
A move.
It's Tom Summer. And a second?
I'll second it.
Jill Niebel.
Both by Summer, same by Niebel.
To approve those bills. Any other discussion?
And I will abstain.
Um, just, just quickly, um, for the, just quickly for the listening audience, the, the, the busing bill. Last year, I believe it was, BJ Busing came, and they, um, they negotiated into their packet a guaranteed number of miles for a year. And any other year, it would have been, been met easily. But this year, obviously, with the days missed, we had to make up for a, a number of miles. So that's where I feel fortunate about this CARES Act money, that it's going to reimburse the district for that. I don't foresee it happening again unless there's a similar issue that keeps us out of school for a long time. But we have not renegotiated next year with BJ Busing, so we'll have to have some conversations about, about that as well.
Any other questions?
Hearing nono in favor, say aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carried with McKean abstaining.
Next on our agenda is the South Dakota High School Athletic Association ballot. Um, in our packet is enclosed, um, it's not Athletic Association, is it, is it? Activities Association Election. Uh, we recommend voting yes on the constitutional amendment and casting ballots for Marty Westmantle, Tom Culver, and Dan Conrad. And again, uh, those are in your packet, if you want to look at them before we cast our vote to see if you have any other interest. Otherwise, um, we just need a motion to pass this with a second. I'll make a motion to accept about, for casting ballots for Marty Westmantle, Tom Culver, and Dan Conrad. Need a second?
Don't move. And yes.
And the constitutional amendment, I'm sorry. And did we have a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, me, Tom.
Tom. Right?
Move by McKean and second by Summer to vote yes.
For Amendment One, Marty Westmantle from Groton School District for the SDH SAA Small Group Board of Education Representative, to vote for Tom Culver from Avon School District for the East River at Large Representative, and to vote for Dan Conrad from Sioux Falls, Washington School District for the Division One Representative. Any other discussion? Hearing nono in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, the DOE Notice of Plan to Instruct During School Closure. Um, enclosed was a Notice of Plan to Instruct During the School Closure that the DOE is requiring. Um, again, that was in our package. We're seeking approval of that. I need a motion.
So move.
All right, motion by Tom. I need a second.
I'll second.
Jim? And I understand some of you are muted, so the delay is there. So please feel free to raise your hand or wave at me, too, and I'll make sure we get that in there. All right? So we had a motion by Tom and a second by Jim.
Yeah, move by Summer, same by Niebel.
Just give the DOE Notice of Plan to Instruct During the School Closure. Any other discussion? Hearing nono in favor, say aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is to discuss, discuss action regarding staffing of the music position. Um, with our two resignations we received, we want, we need to discuss what the board desires in regard to staffing our music program. Um, our projected enrollment numbers are quite low, and we would like to discuss if we should pursue two full-time staff or something less. So I will let Mr. McIntosh speak on this.
Thank you. Well, it's one of these discussions we never like having, and, and I, I'm included in that. But, um, we looked at our projected numbers for next year for instrumental music, and, um, I'm going from memory now, so, so bear with me. But I think we plan on having about forty students, seven through twelve, in instrumental music. That includes fifteen in the high school and about twenty or twenty-five in the junior high. For vocal music, uh, the numbers are very similar, except they're just kind of flip-flopped with the larger group being in high school and the smaller group being in junior high. So as we were looking at this, and we were looking at those student counts and the number of students that would be instructed, we questioned, is that, is that two full-time positions? I don't know that the labor there, the work is there for that. Now, if you think, think for a second about instrumental music, and while they may give lessons, when there's only fifteen in your high school band, fifteen lessons a week doesn't take a lot of time either. So I don't know what's right, and I don't know what's wrong. I, I just know that, um, this is a position that, uh, I needed to bring to you to see how you felt about it, because, um, while, while I think the principals can probably keep two full-time people busy, it's probably not going to be doing, uh, music things. They'll be, have other things that they'll be asked to do, whether it be study halls and, uh, and/or something else. So, um, I'm just looking for feedback and maybe some direction from the board on what you think we should do with this, in this situation.
Shane, um, I apologize, I don't know how this area is educated, but do you find many band instructors or teachers that also are vocal instructors? How does that work?
So, Chris Gerhart resigned the day after our last board meeting. And we started advertising shortly thereafter. So it's been, that's been advertising for over a month. Uh, Mr. Kurtz didn't resign until a, a week or so ago. Between the two, we currently have one applicant. So I don't know, to answer your question, can we find someone who will do both? I think so. Unfortunately, one's going to be stronger in one area than probably the other. For example, the candidate we, uh, we have is, is an instrumental instructor who has the background in, in vocal instruction, uh, but hasn't really done a lot with it. So, um, it's, it's a tough time in trying to find teachers right now, because the other two positions we filled as well had very, very, very few candidates as well. I think we were fortunate to find teachers, especially the quality that we found with as limited of applications as we've received.
I don't personally have a problem in us having one teacher for both areas, as long as that teacher is comfortable and qualified in both areas. I would hate, um, I mean, I don't see anyone getting college scholarships in this area. Not that that's not an option, um, but I don't want to stifle anyone's creativity or their talents either. And I, I know, you know, vocally especially, you have a lot of really talented, you know, students in our school vocally. I just want to make sure whomever we bring on, if it is one for both areas, which, again, I'm fine with, that they are comfortable and able to provide that service so that we don't have any, uh, parents or students, you know, upset that we've limited their children's opportunities.
... as well, because we have had students graduate here with, with, uh, large scholarships for, uh, their musical talents. And I, I don't want to limit that either. That's why I wanted to bring this discussion forward. Looking from the taxpayer side of it, though, I am not, I don't know if it justifies two full-time people. And, you know, we talked about a pos, one and a half. But how do you find, I, I can't find one, let alone a half. So I, I don't, I don't know where we would turn or how we would look for a half a person. So I'm looking for ideas, I guess, more than anything.
This teacher, oh, I'm sorry. Um, this teacher would teach fourth through twelfth band and high school, junior high choir. Is that right?
So Mrs. Fink is our elementary vocal teacher, as you know. And I've, I've talked to her, and I want to keep her in the loop, because obviously, any decisions that we make will infect her. Uh, and, and, um, we would probably have to reorganize a little bit, and I don't know what that would look like. I know a few years ago, when we had a similar situation, um, we hired an aide to be in that classroom with, uh, with them. Uh, we had to do some rearranging as well. So I'd really like, you know, if this is something we want to consider, I'd really like to get her input and, uh, some direction from her and she, and what she thinks would work best for, for the school and the kids.
Where's the band program going, part of it? When we, Mr. Kurtz was hired, we knew that it was an uphill battle, um, getting numbers back in, so that would explain the low numbers in the high school. However, on the elementary side of it, we anticipating more students getting back into the program?
You have some insight?
You know, it, it, it's pretty, um, pretty steady, the numbers. You know, I, I say, we usually get around that twenty, you know, around the twenty kids between fourth or fifth and sixth grade band. Fourth grade is just, uh, uh, lessons that they do. And again, it seems to be that, that, that junior high is kind of the pivotal time there, Tom. But, uh, so, so I haven't, you know, not a huge increase. But again, we, we always have some decent numbers coming out of elementary, it seems, uh, with the interest. But it just seems as junior high, high school, as I get more busy, or, you know, there's a gamut of, of obvious, you know, different reasons. So I haven't seen a spike, but, but they, numbers are still consistent.
So if we combined the positions, would we still be able to offer everything we're currently offering to the elementary and junior high and high school? Or would we have to condense something or take some things away, or?
Principals, can I have you answer that, please?
You know, when, again, was that two years ago, uh, when we went through this, this similar thing? We, we were able to offer all the programs. I know on the junior high, they did combine, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norden, but, uh, I, I noticed the way they tackled junior high chorus and high school chorus. They combined, but everything in the elementary was, was still offered. The only thing it did do, Jill, though, uh, when, when we brought, uh, Mrs. Fink up, we did cut, it was thirty minutes of, of music education out of the elementary per grade, or per class. Uh, so that was two, you know, two times, uh, a week. We cut fifteen minutes off each of those meeting times. So they still had an hour a week, but, um, we're still, we're able to offer those programs, so.
Um, hey, at the high school end or junior high end, there's been discussion, do we need to have the music class? That's a nine-week class. But that's where talking with Mrs. Fink and finding out what she thinks, and also with anybody we would hire would also direct that. As for time with the high school, junior high, I don't think that would be affected much at all. Part of the reasons we modified the way we did the last time was just what everybody was comfortable with. To get it set up the right way this time, probably going to look slightly different than what it was. But, uh, yeah, the schedule has not been made at all, and this is one of the big reasons why, because we just got to see what we can do and how it's going to look once we get to that point.
Mr. Norden, that nine-week music class that you discussed, is that one of the classes in the curriculum? I mean, that counts as a class, right?
Yeah, it's a, the way it works now is in junior high, they spend nine weeks in art and nine weeks in music. So, you know, we would modify, we would find something else possibly if we were to take it out. And I'm not saying we would take it out even.
But if we did take it out, that would be a big load off of that teacher that we hire so that they could focus more on the chorus and the band.
It would add up to one class each semester. So right now, it's kind of like the seventh grade, the one half takes it, the first quarter, the second half takes it, the second quarter, and then eighth grade does the same thing in the third and the fourth. So that would just free up one class period all year long, yes. Couple of years ago, when, I think those years-
I think it was years that Mr. McIntosh talked about when we brought the aide in, correct? Was that last, two years ago? At that time, I looked at other schools our size and the number of music slash band slash vocal instructors. I went five. Based on our enrollment, the five schools larger and the five schools smaller than us. And seven out of the ten, we're doing it with two total instructors at that time, just so you know.
For their entire school, elementary and high school?
Yes.
Well, I think, um, personally, what I would like to see is the administration find a way to make it work with our current, um, staffing and hire maybe one to replace the two that are leaving out, utilizing the elementary music instructor, and see if we can make it work. And like Mr. McIntosh had previously said, or maybe it was, um, Mr. Yost, we'd need to really pull in Mrs. Fink and see what we can do and see maybe rearranging the schedule. Mr. Norden, maybe, you know, offering a different class other than the nine-week music. You know, maybe art with something else. And see what we can do, and if we think it can work. I know we're kind of in a time crunch to get that out there, although we do have a candidate. And just move forward, maybe putting something out to the, the board once you've kind of ironed out some of this. That's kind of the direction I see us moving in, but I, I want to definitely open this up to all of the board members and kind of see where you guys are thinking that we might want to go with this so that we could give our administrators some marching orders so that they can move the program forward. So I'm going to go ahead and just open it up. We'll start with you again, Jill.
Uh, I guess I would be fine, uh, combining the position. I would just say that it's really hard to build a program and make it bigger and better and want more people to be involved, um, when we're not, when it, you know, it feels like we're changing things a lot. I don't know if that makes sense, but when you're combining things, you're not going to have space to grow either. And maybe at some point, we will, I don't know. I'm sure it waxes and wanes, just like anything else. Sports, you know, certain sports wax and wane, too. I'm sure this is just one of those things. But I personally, I think music is really important, and, um, I think there are some students who, if you have the right teacher or the right way that they're selling it or doing it, they appreciate it a little bit more. I don't know. And I, I think we have that. I know Mrs. Fink does a great job. So, um, yeah, I would be okay with combining it. I just don't want anything cut out. I guess is more where I'm coming from. I think that that class in junior high is a good class. I'm sure they, the kids that don't like music would hate that I said that. But I think it's a good learning experience for them to, to learn all different things. It makes them well-rounded, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Jill. Tom?
Um, I guess I got a question, follow-up question from earlier, and that's, it's, I don't know who this is for. So we went from a strong band program. We had a really good marching band and stuff.
We had a really good march band and stuff. We went down, and now we haven't been able to, to pick it back up, basically. What do you, what's the trend across the board, other schools, I guess? Maybe Craig, I don't know, you did kind of that survey, is that a, whoever?
Yeah, do you know what-
...other schools, with their programs, are you seeing, seeing a decline in band enrollment?
I would have no idea.
We don't have any statistics on that, Tom.
Well, I'm just wondering why, you know, we, we were doing really good, and then we went downhill, and we know what happened there, thinking things were going to come back up, and now it, we can't seem to pick back up. I'm just wondering if that's a trend, or if that's just parks done, or I'm just-
I think you're seeing a little bit of a trend. We do, we're seeing it in our athletic programs as well. The participation numbers are just lower. That being said, I think the dynamic personality of your instructor has as much to do with the recruitment and retention of students in the fine arts. When we were at our best here a few years ago, we had two very dynamic instrumental teachers that the kids really bought into, and, you know, I don't know what's happened since. That, that energy and that fire is not there. I don't know. But that's the, that's the second problem that I, I talked about, Tom, was the number of applicants we're getting. Trying to find that person is, is difficult to start with, and then with such a limited applicant pool, it's just nearly, you know, you gotta get lucky. That being said, and just piggyback kind of on a few things that Jill said, you know, another thing to do is to try to find ways to recruit kids, recruit kids into your program. And that takes time as well, out of your day, if they would utilize it that way. So, so again, I, I just don't know what's right.
I, I think just by looking at everything that goes on out other places and so on, one of the things that has hurt us also is the dual credits, where kids are using that time to take some of those courses. And that's not at all the major driving thing, but I think that has a little factor in there. And when the band was super strong, the choir was much smaller, and it's kind of flip-flopped a little bit here. And I don't know if that's a cycle, and then one of the other problems is, once they get in high school and they're done, it's hard to recruit kids in high school to come out. Number one, they would have had to do it going through, so to fill those numbers back up always is, is tough. And you mentioned that earlier, where, you know, we're just kind of in that spot. The key is keeping the ones that are out, out. And, you know, I think Mr. McIntosh spoke to it, just the situations we deal with.
So I guess my, one last question I would have would be, so if we combine this, are we going to lose some more kids, you know, a couple in each program and both programs go down? That'd be the concern. And I'm, I'm not against combining it, don't get me wrong at all, just concerned that we don't continue to go down.
To be 100% honest, it could go both ways. You know, we might have kids that really like whoever the instructor is, and boy, now I want to be out in band and in choir. Or it could go the other way. You know, it, I can't tell you. Again, it's, it's finding the right candidate. Hopefully, we can do that, but, so, sorry to give you a bad answer there, Tom.
It's fine. I'm, basically, I guess, my answer is, I would like to see separate, so we could try and rebuild in that program. However, I'm in agreement with you guys. You know what you got for the application pool. If that's what you need to do to combine it, I'm fine with that. Just would, we'd like to see if we could do something to try to rebuild.
You know, we might get to a point where we don't have a choice. And if we don't get the applicants in, we certainly could continue advertising for both separate positions and, and, you know, secure one as soon as we get the applicant that we like, and, and then, and see what we get for the second position.
Thank you, Tom. Those were good comments. I do want to add, and I know it was briefly touched on, and Jill, I think you kind of highlighted on this, you know, we keep adding programs to our school, you know, like gymnastics and, and competitive cheer, and, and then we have, we have so much. And I have seen, with my twins having gone through the school system, where the kids are pulling away from some other things. I mean, they're spread so thin between their academics and, and all of their extracurricular activities. And then add having a job on top of it. I, I think that's why you're seeing the smaller numbers in, in maybe some of the arts. So, you know, the more we keep adding, the kids get it, they have to make choices, the students are. And unfortunately, I, I do think that they're dropping more of some of these elected type ones. Not that it's not important, because I, I do think it is, but I think that might be one thing that we're seeing, that the more we're adding, students are making choices. So Jim, I want to go ahead and move on to you and see what your thoughts on it is.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same, that I'm okay with combining it, and it is going to take that special person to find, or we have to cross our fingers that we get that person. But if the enrollment starts coming up, which I too very much hope it does, to open that back up for two separate positions again. But if the numbers weren't what they do now, I mean, that's just kind of how we're going to have to go with it. Or if there's other things we can do to incentivize them to be in these programs, and if there's something we can do, schedule or something, you know, to maybe visit some of those things also to kind of help it out. I don't, I don't know if that's possible. I mean, I don't see the schedule, or what schedule is, but, you know, with the dual credits and everything else, if there's something we can do internally to help that out, I'd be in favor of that, too. I know with my own kids, I mean, it kind of came down to that partially, too, is, is that it just got to the point where there is, and Harps said it, there's a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, sometimes something's kind of give.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. And John, just, you're, you're muted. Hit your spacebar.
How's that?
Good.
Yeah, I think it's been pretty well all said here. I'd, I'd like to try and stay with two, if we all can. I, I think academically, when you talk about a student wanting to work in that type of academic setting, I can speak with my son. He got a, he got almost a full ride. And then again, you talked about having the right instructors, or we have here. We were fortunate at that time that he had some great mentors that he went on, and of course, he's continued that to where he's at today. So, and, and again, I know we have a small setting, lots of polling. We try and offer a lot of different avenues for kids, and so, so yeah, if at all possible. But, but I think you hit it on the head, where we have to really talk to our current teacher and get her views on it, and see if we can kind of put something together. And as Tom said, we need to build some numbers back, so, but that takes work, takes work.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, John. So Shane, I know you're sitting over there wondering probably the direction, and so I'm going to sum it up on what I believe it is. And board members, if I am incorrect, please correct me. I, I think we all agree that if it's possible, we would like both a music and a band instructor in the, in the area that we discussed. However, if we don't get the applicants, that we're okay with combined with the hiring of a new instructor and working with the current elementary music teacher, and the, the administration figuring out a way to make it work, that we can proceed on this next school year with just two instructors in this area, band and vocal. Thumbs up? All right? You have your direction. Do you have any questions with that? Mr. McIntosh?
No, I, you know, I think that the candidate pool will probably make the decision for us, and, and I hope it's because we have two dynamic individuals who will motivate kids, but we'll see.
Well, and I, I do believe with each new candidate and each new teacher or instructor we get in, it brings many possibilities, so I'm positive that we'll get a good candidate, and I'm looking forward to them re-energizing our program. All right, well, that was the end of our agenda. I want to just open it up. Does anyone have any questions or anything they want to throw out for consideration or discussion? Nope? Okay, well, with that being said, I would like to adjourn the meeting. It is eight eleven, and I need to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move. Okay, Tom.
A second.
And second was Jim.
Need to adjourn at eight eleven PM. Any other discussion? Non-homie in favor say aye.
Aye.
Give me it, Craig.
Oh, shoot.
Craig, Tom couldn't hear you.
There we go.
Move by Summer, second by Mahoney to adjourn at eight eleven PM. Any other discussion? Hearing non-homie in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poll same time. Motion carried.
Great. Well, thank you all for attending.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good week.
See you later.